I'd like to receive a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Motion, one second.
All those, any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Could I receive a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 20th, 2017 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I receive a motion and a second to approve the bills payable?
A motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I receive a motion and a second to approve the charitable contributions for the first quarter?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, of course.
Of course.
Absolutely.
It goes without saying, but we're going to say it.
Yep.
Thank you. Very generous, as always. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I receive a motion and a second to accept the quarterly review of student activities?
Make a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're on to good news.
Eric's not here.
I don't see Eric, even though we still listen.
Probably like him.
I know. A lot of people like him and acknowledge his good work.
I'll still give kudos to Eric. Teacher of the year, State of Minnesota IT. You've maybe read about it already on email that Mike Johnson put out. But really an outstanding recognition in a field where he has to be very diversified and an expert in different areas. It takes a lot of extra work to keep up with that. And I get to see that when I walk back there and I'm like, how do you know CAD design? How do you know welding? How do you know electronics? How do you know help with auto body? Just outstanding young teacher. And so he represents Hastings at the highest level. And we're very proud of him. So congrats, Eric, and thanks for all that you do. And the recognition is very well deserved.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, we will move directly to the superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report starts out with the exciting audit report.
I loved every page.
Many of you have met Aaron over the years. And you know the format in which he presents. And so without further ado, Aaron, it's your show.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So I thought I'd go through our management report. You never seen the financial statements for the district, separate student activity reports, and then our management report. And actually, I'll go through our PowerPoint presentation, which I took some slides out of that management report. So I don't have any surprises for you with my PowerPoint that we're not included with in our management report. But I really believe they all went very smoothly this year. And I'll march through this information pretty quickly. But please feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way. And I'll save some time at the end for any questions. With that, I'll share with you our goal to provide an opinion on your financial statements. So they are the district's documents. And we're here to provide an opinion as to are they fairly presented? We would also share with you any internal control, some compliance findings that we have as a result of our annual audit process. If we're very good at financial statement audit, you're subject to additional tests for the single audit, which is the federal awards, because the amount of funds that you do receive is well in excess of the $750,000 cutoff for the single audit testing. The Minnesota State Auditor's new compliance manual, and then the May for Activity Fund account. And I'll get right down to it with the results of our audit. So with the financial statement audit, the district audit, we have issued what is known as a modified or a clean opinion of financial statements before you fairly present the results of our annual audit process. With regard to the internal control and compliance reports that I previously introduced and mentioned, we're pleased to report that we did not have any material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance that were required to be reported to you. So last year, you may recall, we had just one finding in internal controls. And we do follow up on that. And we're pleased to report that they have implemented, the management's implemented the required changes. That was with regard to uniform guidance and documenting internal controls policies. And that was implemented this year. And so we have eliminated that finding.
Excellent.
Excellent. Glad to hear it. With regard to the student activity audit, we have issued a qualified opinion. So that's on a cash basis, a cash receipts and disbursements, which is as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. So, but with that, we are sharing with you it's not the same opinion as full accrual accounting or the modified accrual. And we've got that qualified opinion for that. And with regard to the completeness of student activities, and the volume of activity is at a much smaller level and the sufficiency of completeness of cash receipts there. But everything that was recorded and reported in the disbursements, we believe that statement is fairly presented with the requirements for the MDE audit of their student activities. With regard to compliance, that's the last bullet point you see there. And we had just one finding. There's a requirement about timely deposits of receipts for student activities. And we use a measurement point of about a week. So if it's collected, we're looking for it to make sure it's been deposited within seven days of when it was collected. There used to be a requirement where it couldn't be held over the weekend. They have modified that, understanding you're collecting maybe even on Saturday nights. And so we've modified it simply to be seven days. So that has helped improve then the number of findings, instances we've seen for your district has been reduced in the number of compliance audit findings that we've had there in terms of the number of instances. So four out of the 40 that we tested. So with that, it gets me through the results of our audit. I'll share with you in the remainder of my slides, some financial information of where the district ended the year, some general information about the funding of school districts, as I know the boards were. You received on the basic form of allowance, a 2% increase for the audit year we're looking at for June 30th, 2017. And that has been approved for the next two years at a 2%. So that's not all of the sources, but it is the largest single funding source for Minnesota school districts. This next slide, I think, is informational in terms of the unrestricted operating fund balance on a statewide average and then alongside the Hastings School District for the past 10 years. The statewide average for 2017 won't be available until well after the end of this calendar year, but we'll have that then for next year's audit. But as you can see, it does reflect the district's spend down of available fund balance in recent years as planned in the audit, or through your budget process, actually. And when we're coming out to complete the audit, it has been decreasing as you have approved in the budget process. We've got another graph that later on that also shows a similar picture when we're looking at just the general fund.
Before you move on.
Yes.
Is the recommendation still, in past years, the recommendation has been to keep a 20%, to keep that balance at 20% of our operating expenditures? Is that still the recommendation?
Is that your internal recommendation? Because as the auditor, you know, I can't provide that recommendation. But I have in the past shared what I've known from, like, the state auditor's office, what they share.
And I probably spoke to a couple of you once on that.
No problem. But like GFOA and those organizations, but rules of thumb they use are 5% to 10%. But also, they look at one to two months' operating expenditures, which then get you closer to 18% to 19% fund balance.
Yeah. And I believe our policy is the two months.
I think you're right in that range, too. Yep. So, and as you'll, when we get to the general fund, we talk about it. You anticipated a deficit spend this past year. And the district has done that and stayed within those parameters. So I'll share a different percent when we look at the general fund in a couple of slides.
Thank you.
I've got two slides here. I'll go through them pretty quickly, because then I tend to repeat myself when we get to your general fund and some of the differences. But we look at the revenues per ADM, the statewide seven-county metro area, and then for Hastings Public Schools, the change from the prior year. Just a note that I made, you can see at this level right here with the total general fund, the increase over the prior year, primarily due to that formula increase, as I mentioned before, the 2%, as well as then there were some improvements in special ed funding and then some other local sources that were received improving over the prior year, which then directly had an impact, bottom line, to the increase. On the expenses, we also have those presented on a per ADM basis for the district. These are by the function level. Later on, we talk about them by what is known as the object level, salaries and benefits. But this is the areas where they're being spent in elementary, secondary, special education, vocational education. You also experienced an increase this past year, about, bottom line, when we look at total expenditures, of about 3.8%. The largest increases as anticipated within elementary and secondary, regular education function or program, as well as within the special education area, as presented in the table above. At this point now, our focus changes just to look at the general fund operation for the past 10 years. So we've got a graph here looking at your 10 years of history with cash and investment balance, the unrestricted fund balance, and then annual expenditures. So it's just a snapshot of the point in time as of year-end, June 30th, for the past 10 years. It's slightly difficult to see, but looking at that unrestricted bar, you can see it is tapering down, consistent with the planned spend down in the general fund that we saw earlier in the previous graph. The blue bar for the cash, or it almost looks purple here in the slide, you can see that is representing a change in the cash balances. And that isn't following that same pattern, but that, I just wanted to remind you, is impacted by how the state meters cash flow to you. So when there's been lean times at the state, they've shifted the timing on when they're making their state aid payments to you. So back in 2012, they were probably paying you close to 70% of your current year state aids, 65% in the year you earned them. And then they give you the balance the following year. Well, in the past several years here, they've been back to that full 90-10 payment schedule, as well as the tax shift is a tool that they use. It's revenue neutral to you, so it doesn't hit your fund balance, but it does have an impact on cash balances at times. This is the graph I was referring to and looking at, just the unrestricted or the components of fund balance of the general funds. We break down your equity in the general fund at year-end to the various components and nonspendable, which is resources that you've already sent out the door for, but have prepayments, prepaid items or inventory. So they're assets to you, but you can't really change how you're going to use them. They're on the books already. Restricted would capture things like operating capital or facilities maintenance dollars that have to be spent in a particular manner. So they're restricted in how you can use them. And then you've got your other components of committed, where the board has approved certain commitments for funding pension obligations and other areas. We've got assigned fund balance, which I believe for your district is strictly when you've approved a budget to deficit spend. We know that as of year-end 2017, because you're already operating in the next year. So when you're deficit spending the following year, you've essentially committed some, or not committed, I shouldn't use another term, but you've assigned certain dollars to, of that equity, to help balance the budget for the next year or to cover that deficit. Then leaving with you that unassigned fund balance. And you can see the categories, the unrestricted, where we're capturing all of the committed, assigned, unassigned, and then that unassigned fund balance. And as of year-end on that unassigned, you're right at 20% fund balance. My next two slides are on adjusted ADM or average daily membership and then the resulting pupil units. There's a conversion to, from ADM to pupil units, depending on where the students are being served at an elementary level or high school level. The graph shows you here, just a slight decrease this past year. The district served about 27 less students than, or ADM, than the prior year, or a decrease of about 0.6% when we're just comparing the last two years. My next slide just quickly shows you that percentage or the decrease you've been experiencing each of the past few years here. This 2015, just a reminder, it looks like it's out of place, but they changed how the pupil units or the students were weighted. So there was a one-time adjustment that they made, which didn't reduce your funding. They then adjusted how the formula amount was to keep that even, but they wanted to simplify the various weighting categories. So it's kind of a one-time blip that we'll have to live with until it falls off the Just quickly, a couple more slides with the general fund. We look at your, we spend a lot of time with the general fund. It's your primary operation, most of the resources flowing through the general fund operating fund. Revenues for the general fund were $52.3 million this past year. This provides a breakdown of the primary sources, property taxes, state sources, federal sources, and then everything else. As you can see, the property taxes making up about 72.4% of the revenues of the general fund, followed by 20% within property taxes. So about 92% of your revenues within just those two categories. Overall, big picture, the comparison to budget, what was anticipated, coming in very close within 1.9%, coming in over budget by 1.9%. And primarily in the state sources for special education funding, then other local sources, which can be a difficult area to project, because certain things are donations and fees that you can't force people to participate with. So that's a couple of the areas where you have favorable variances. And when we compared the prior year, there was about a 2% increase over the prior year. So some of that being the formal allowance of 2%, as well as some of the improvements in special ed funding, but then offset slightly by the decrease in the number of students On expenses, I've got a similar graph of salaries, benefits, and then the various other object categories of where those resources are spent. And as you can see, and not unusual to the districts that we work with, and within the areas, is the salaries and benefits making up about 78% of the spending of the general fund to finance, or how the resources to educate the students within the school district. Total expenditures this year were 52, $52.7 million, and very close to budget, within a half of 1%. So coming in just over budget, 0.4% over budget, and about 4% over the prior year, as anticipated with the annual budget process. I've got just a couple more slides. The two other, what I would consider your operating funds, the food service fund, the community service fund, both of them ended with a favorable position compared to what was anticipated in the budget. When you look at both of these funds, when we're in about the $50 million range with the general fund, each of these operations are about $2.3 million each. So you can get a scale, the size difference in each of these individual funds. The food service fund ended with a fund balance of about 23% of expenses, while the community service fund ended with about 30% of expenses. The recently created internal service fund, funds that you have, too, with the self-insured dental and health benefit operations. This captures the activity within those operations. So you can see the change over the past three years. So the first, so three full years of actual activity occurring since 2015, and you can see the change and improved financial position within those self-insured activities. And then my last slide, it's been moving pretty smoothly here, and I'll try to keep it here. But this is where the biggest change occurred this year with the audit, is this year you had to do an implementation of a new audit standard in how other post-employment benefits or OPEB are accounted for, as well as a new pension standard for the district's local pension that is operated for the district. So you can see, this past year, we saw change in the overall net position. So up to this point, we've been talking about your individual fund-based statements, which is how you operate the district, how you budget and approve annual budgets. This is a requirement under the current financial reporting model, where we take all of your individual funds, consolidate them, and then we capture long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So the focus on the fund-based statements is, are you able to pay the ongoing payments of debt service? This gives you a snapshot overall of how it's changed long-term. I've tried to summarize the various differences. So we looked at the governmental funds. So when you talk about your individual governmental funds, well, to this point, we were talking about you had a $756,000 increase in the governmental funds overall. Then you've got these other adjustments to get to the full accrual entity-wide presentation. Let's bring in capital assets at this category. Then you've got your long-term bonds. And then the other adjustments that change, the pension adjustments, which captures the TRA and PERA obligations. So overall, fund balance has increased. Capital asset decrease this past year is largely just one year of depreciation on the resources or the capital infrastructure you have, your buildings. So that's really the biggest change there, is one additional year of depreciation on those assets. Then we look at your bonds, and you've paid off one more year of bonds and other long-term obligations. So these two categories get netted together down here in this component of net investment and capital assets. So you can see, you're paying your bonds off faster than the buildings are being depreciated. These other categories are what you're seeing are largely hitting this change in unrestricted net position. So this is the change in how the TRA and PERA pension plans, the statewide pension plans, so they're really out of your control. It's just sharing, putting that proportionate share of those obligations on your financial statements. And those obligations have increased the net liability for those. So then your proportionate share has also increased. So that's the change you're seeing, bottom line, when we look at the entity-wide financial statements.
Just so I fully understand that pension, because I'm seeing one very large difference up there, and that's the pension adjustments. So am I correct in saying that's a statewide number?
It's your proportionate share of the statewide number. So the statewide number is in the billion, and your proportionate share is at $13 million.
So we had a change of $13.8 million?
Yes. And how they've allocated your share of that.
In one year.
In one year.
Isn't part of that the GASB, the pension and OPEB besides the TRA and PERA? Is that in there, too, or not?
That separated with the 7.3 is the pension, OPEB.
That's all the, that's all the amount.
Yes, yes. There's a portion of the $13 million is the change, is a GASB change that we implemented. So there was a change in accounting principle in your financial statements of about $9.6 million, which is part of the $7 million and part of the $13 million there. But those pension plans are not nearly as funded as they, they don't feel they're as funded as they were one year ago, largely because of investment results. And then the discount rate that they're allowed to use under pension standards. So when they had their audits completed, those obligations went way up. And then they have to parse that out to all the participants.
What's, I mean, you obviously, the big shock to see that change, have they changed the structure of these plans? Are they still running the same? Are we going to have to worry about this on the road?
Great question. So I think what it does is it obviously brings it right to your financial statements. So it brings it into the eye a little closer, so.
I'm just curious if they were off by that much, if they've restructured how they've set up. And that might not be something you can answer, but I'd be curious to know if they've restructured how they define that pension benefit.
I don't think they restructured the pension benefit, but that becomes some of their discussions as to, in terms of what, you know, will there be improvements, increases in what they provide in pensions, and increases in pensions. They have changed some, a lot of it is really actuarial valuation changes and how they're determining what is their liability. And the biggest change they made is they changed the discount rate. Will they really be able to earn 7.5% for the life of the plan? And that got changed this past year in the TRA closer to less than 5%. And that was the biggest change, I believe, in how that pension liability increased. So then your proportionate share becomes larger as well.
So it's kind of a situation where, so basically, all similar school districts in size, and that also, you see, you know, $13 million liability this year as well.
Yes. So it's been a common discussion this year in presentations.
And this is what was driving the discussion at the state legislature about adding another half percent from the school side and a half percent from the employee side to be paid into TRA. That did not, that didn't, it was, yes, it was part of it, and then they pulled it out. So.
It was proposed legislation that didn't.
Yeah. They just kicked that can down the road. So I would imagine that would come up.
But this is highlighting some of the impact of it.
And so, you know, when you look at it here, is there an immediate reaction for the board to take? Because you see this change, it doesn't change what you're contributing, and that's where it hits you on your budgetary basis and how you operate your general funds. So until they, at legislative level, decide we need to change contribution rates, that's when you feel it directly, because you have to plan for that in your operating budgets. And if the stock market would go up drastically for several years, this goes the other direction, too.
We're burning you up, Cassiopeia. Really, you can do that, Charles.
Thank you. So any other questions? I got through all my slides.
Thank you very much. And again, we, as a school district, we appreciate the fact that your firm comes to Hastings as soon as possible. Because us getting this information weeks ago is definitely an advantage to our school district. So we do appreciate that you put us on the schedule right away, and we get to see you and your staff in the summer. We like that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks for answering.
All right. The next item on the superintendent's report.
Yeah, we're going to take a little bit more time on this to read. This is a first reading draft, which means feel free to shoot some arrows at it. Already after I did the first draft, I said to some of you as board members, a couple of principals, when I met with them on whatever day it was, Tuesday, they said that I'd forgotten a few of the key components. So I read this tonight. Tomorrow, I have an administrative meeting where I go through it with the entire administrative group. We talk about it. Then if there's any questions or fine tuning between now and the next board meeting or work session, I would fine tune it. We'd go through it again at a work session. And then we would formally adopt it at the November meeting if all the, everything's tweaked out. So as we go through it, you know, student travel, I took some of this from other school districts of what they had in their policies, and I also took through the discussion that we've had on student travel. When I went down under the definitions, I know that the board really looked at this policy in our discussion, and so did I, more on the extended trips or the international trips or the overnight trips, for lack of a better word. Having said that, I still liked keeping in there field trip A, just so that all school board members through time understand that we do have field trips that we take, we do have extended travel, and we do have international travel. This policy doesn't talk about the field trip to the Duke Mansion. It doesn't talk about the field trip to.
The state Capitol.
State Capitol. But I wanted to list it in there just so that we understand that there is a designation to those trips. If we're going to the procedures, I'm actually, I know it's going to bore you, but I'm going to read through it, because this is our first reading, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. All trips must have an identified organizer, that should be organizer in charge of the planning and execution of the activity. More than one person may serve as or, or organizer.
Organizer.
But all must be clearly identified and agree to the organized status. So what that means is that if there's two people that want to plan a trip, that's fine. If there's three people that want to be, but we will at least know who those individuals are. Every effort will be made to have a trip on non-student contact days. The board recognizes there might be certain situations where it has to be on a Friday or it has to be on a Monday, but to stay away from student contact days is definitely the intent of the board. The site principal, typically we're talking about the high school principal or the middle school principal, those are the two that sites to take the extended travel. They will work collaboratively with the identified organizer. So if I'm the site principal, and Lisa's the organizer of the. So if I'm the site principal and Lisa's the organizer of the DC trip, then collaboratively, Lisa and I make the phone call to the vendor that we're going to use. We're on the phone together asking for proof of liability insurance. We're talking together about who the chaperones should be. We're talking about that selection process. We're outlining together the financial specifics for the trip. And the site principal will determine the number of chaperones. As a board, we didn't want to say that there has to be this formula for every six students there's a chaperone or every eight, because as a board we recognize that some trips have eight extra parents go along. And well, then we might not need one chaperone for every six or every eight.
Second bullet up there, you have a repetitive, including the number of the number.
Okay.
Just need to clean that up.
Okay.
And I just want to point out that the site principal is determining the number of chaperones that are required to be school district staff. So not, I mean, they'll work together on the total number of chaperones, but the site principal gets to make a determination. I think there also need to be some clarification on if it is exactly because we do have, for example, the Eagle Bluff trip, that we want that to be a student contact A, obviously. You know, so, but an international trip to Peru, we might want that to be in a non-student contact period.
These trips are our frequent flyer miles. First of all, I want to start off by restating that the board and I administrators are thankful for any staff member who is willing to lead an organizing goal on these trips. There's a tremendous workload. It's a tremendous benefit to our students. We know that this day and age that we live in, there's also a risk that they take from a student saying, a female student saying, hey, Tim Collins looked at me or Tim Collins touched me or Tim, you know, there's always that risk that you take when you're doing these overnight trips. We also know that, I'll say as an Aim Bill Rutter on the Italy trip, the last two years in a row, we've had students get sick over in another country and he's had to stay in that hospital for five days. We know the responsibility and the liability and we really appreciate it of what they do give to our students. Students, if they do get frequent flyer miles, and if the student does have an account to frequent flyer mile, then at the end of the trip does go to the student. The frequent flyer miles, if the vendor does give it, any miles beyond that should go to the school district and not to the person organizing it. So if Lisa's the organizer of the DC trip or the organizer of the Italy trip or wherever, she doesn't get a hundred thousand in frequent flyer miles put onto hers. That would go to the district. The trip organizer will not be compensated by the vendor for parental meetings or for the number of students participating on the trip. Some of the vendors will kick back money per student, per individual going on to the lead organizer and for parent organization meetings. The trip organizer shall carry appropriate student emergency health and contact information for all participating students. The student court of conduct applies in all aspects at all times to students participating trips, as do usual employee expectations and United States laws regardless of the destination. What I meant by that is I don't care if the drinking age in Costa Rica is sixteen. You're going to follow the United States law when you're over there. Later on, it also talks about court of conduct meetings, et cetera. Oh, maybe in the right, right in the next one.
Some way.
Okay, yeah, superintendent has the discretion to cancel any trip at any time if we believe that there's something going on in the world, whether it's a health concern with a virus or something that's going on with a violent part of that world, and we will cancel it. And then we put in there that there are insurances, for those of you who have gone on trips, there are insurances that you can take out if it is canceled. Basically saying the school district's not going to be responsible for loss of a cancellation of a trip. Background checks are required for adults, not school district employees. And I say that because school district employees already have the background check who have participated on extending their international trips. One of the questions that I was asked is, does that mean all employees? And we're not going to answer it tonight, but that'll be a work session. Not all employees, all adults. We're not going to answer that tonight, but the question was, is the background check for the chaperone only adult? Or if there's six extra parents going along that aren't chaperones, do they have to have the background checked as well? Administratively, we felt yes. Because even though that adult may not be responsible for five children walking around DC or Italy, there still is a situation that they are in close proximity to students on these trips. So administratively, so that's something we have to answer as a board. We do know that the cost of those background checks will be included as participation of the trip. So for example, if the Italy trip's going to have thirty students and there's going to be four adults going along, and the average cost of the background check is twenty-five dollars or a hundred bucks in for those four chaperones, then each student, it's included two to three dollars extra to cover for that background check.
Question, Tim, on that. How often would we run a background check? So say year one, you know, that parent goes along on a trip. Two or three years later, they go on another trip. Do we rerun it? Do we say, is there a certain amount of time there? Do we do it every year? How do we, how do we handle that?
Great question.
I think for most organizations, I know as a swim official, I'm required to have a background check.
Twelve months usually.
Every twelve months.
No, I agree with that because we don't know what happens in between.
I think that's something in our next work session to discuss, but I believe that that's where we would have it at as well. Student and chaperones must provide appropriate medical disclosure and releases. At the parent meeting, information will be provided to students and chaperones clearly identifying fees that are refundable. So an example of that might be, on the DC trip, students will in advance pay ten dollars if they're going to have a photo that they want to receive. So that when we get out there, let's say eighty students want a photo on the trip, we give a check for eight hundred dollars to the person taking the photo. Well, if we don't go to DC that year, then that would be, that could be refundable. Some of the trips also require cash tips. So when you go to Costa Rica, let's say they require a cash tip for the bus driver, they require a cash tip. Internally, Kim and I haven't finalized how that would work. But so let's say that all of your children are going to Costa Rica and it's a twenty dollar cost for the cash tip. You pay that to the school in advance, then we would refund that. So we would be able to identify some things on the trip, depending on the trip of what would be refunded. There will be at least one in-person mandatory information meeting with student parents and chaperones to cover information. Basically, we want where the parent does have to be there in front of the organizer, in front of the principal. Well, there's the cash tip. That's directing the superintendent, or the principal then to have conversations with the, and eventually I know Kim will have a template on what we would do in this situation before we get to that. There will be, there will be a crisis management plan in place for the trip. Needs to be there. So example, you're going on the trip, what's going to happen if a student does get injured? You're in Puerto Rico. Parent needs to know that if they do get injured, we're taking them to the closest hospital or clinic. We're not going to take them to the, or whatever that might be. That discussion has to take place. What will happen if the lead organizer becomes ill? What if Bill Rutter becomes ill over in Italy? Who now is next and has to be flown home? Who will be next in charge? Those types of things. Student misconduct, and we've had to have this, where we tell a student, you're going home, your parent's going to fly here to get you. So all those particulars about, and you're not going to be able to come up with what if for everything. You're not going to be able to think of everything, but there should be a core of six or seven things of what will happen if this happens. Your child becomes violently ill. We call your two cell numbers. We can't reach you. We will be taking them to the clinic or the hospital, just so everybody knows what page that we are on. And the last one, I don't know about this. This was in the Forest Lake one, so I just tossed it in there. I need to, when I meet with Mike, I'm going to have him ask typically on our choir trip and our band trip and our, on those two trips, when we go out of the country and Bill Rutter on the Italy trip, do we register with the United States embassy that we're over there? I don't know. But it was in the Forest Lake policy, so I threw it in here for discussion. Anything else from board members that we've talked about over the last four to five months?
Yeah, you know, we have talked about some of the fundraising pressure on community businesses and parents and students and the amount of time spent fundraising too for these things. And I don't know, I mean, there's no sentence I can think of that cleanly fit into this. And maybe that belongs somewhere completely else. I'm just wondering if we, just give us some thought on whether we should be trying to address that in this policy or try to address it some other means. And the other thing I will say that is more directly relating to this policy that's up there, is in, you know, in section E where they say, you know, talk about compensation. I'm just wondering if we don't need to kind of make sure that's defined, you know, what is, what is compensation? So I know that, you know, money is obvious, right? But scouting trips, I consider that compensation.
We talked about compensating their hotel and flight. Maybe define what we are.
Yeah. So, you know, I think those points look good. I just think that they're maybe left a little too open for interpretation, so.
All right, I jotted down notes on that and we'll bring that back, those points back to our work session. Anything else as we've talked about it?
Do we need to talk about too deep leadership?
Too deep leadership.
So this is something that they do in Boy Scouts to protect both the leaders and the kids?
Okay.
So you're always have two leaders.
Yeah, we definitely, you know, Eagle Bluff, we carry through with that philosophy. Yeah, and I'll talk, on those issues, I'll have to go back to the people who have been the main organizers and ask if they've done that in the past or how that works.
I don't know how practical it is.
Right. I know that when we can do it, we do do it even on elementary field day trips. If we can have two parents with a group of five students, we want that rather than just one.
And health insurance cards, is that something that we normally get for, especially for international trips?
I don't know.
Is that on the medical release form?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
You have to provide your policy numbers, but we probably should, irregardless.
I'll find out, I'm guessing we're already doing that, but it'd be good to know. All right, and if anything else comes up, and again, I'll run it past the principals, I'll fine tune it, I'll get it back to you at our work session, we'll go through it again. And if we're not ready to go by November fourth, that's, that's fine. So, all right.
With that, we're going to move on to the action items portion of our evening. And we'll start with the first item. We'll entertain a motion in a second to accept the 2016-17 audit report.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
To save, we better pass it since we sent Aaron home before we.
Before we take action. Nobody to ask any tricky questions.
I just want to share on that, and it's definitely due to Kim's organization in our business office where everything's ready to go. That's why they do schedule us first because they know that we will be ready to go. And it's again, due to her leadership that they do come here immediately. And as I've said before, some of my superintendent friends that are just becoming superintendents, there are another districts right now that they're just getting some of this information, just some of it, right now. Kim and I knew most of this information five to six weeks ago because of the processes that we do have in place. So thank you to MMKR for getting here, but also thank you to our business office who gets all the paperwork ready to go in the summer months.
Any further discussion?
You know, this, you know, one of the things, when I was chair back a few years ago, I thought was really interesting about this process, I'm sure you're getting in on this, is getting called down here to the office while they're here gathering that information. And so, you know, for years I'd heard Kim say, well, you know, how they come here first and all that sort of thing. But it's really, you know, if anything, you're probably understanding it. I mean, they're just gush over how nice it is to come to Hastings where everything is well organized and they can get through this stuff. So I don't know, in future years, maybe board members beyond the chair should come down to just stop in and talk to them and check it out. It's interesting.
Yeah. I'm not going to ask for further input.
Thank you.
Stan's still making eye contact.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and it is, it's actually, everybody has their assignments in the district office. And it even goes out to like the principals in their building during the year, doing everything the correct way. It's really everybody in the district following the procedures and so.
All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the 2017-18 revised budget, number one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We're going to have a presentation from Kim.
I'll do a real quick one because I know you guys have another meeting to get to. So you guys have the packet. We'll go to, we'll start out with page two. So what this page is telling you is what has changed from when you did the adopted budget in May to the current budget right now. So the first thing is, come October first, we always redo the student counts because the kids are all in the buildings now to see where we're at. And so there was twenty-two point nine more adjusted pupil units than what was projected. Six of them were early childhood special ed. Thirteen of them were more kindergarten students. Eighteen of them were more students in grade one through four. There was twenty-two less students in grades five through eight. And there was eight more students in grade nine through twelve. And the majority of those were in the STARS program that's growing. The other thing that we had to do is when we did the adopted budget, we had one point five percent for the formula increase. And legislatures actually approved two percent. So the point five addition is the two hundred and forty-two dollars and seven hundred and forty-three cents. And then the increase from the increased adjusted pupil units is a hundred nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven. And the reason that doesn't look as large as you think it would be is because when you have declining enrollment, so if you lose twenty-five students from one year to the next, those twenty-five students, you get twenty-eight percent of the formula that year. So when, then you had less than twenty-five, you were already getting twenty-eight percent of that. So this is the sixty-two percent, is that right?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two? Twenty-eight? Okay. And then the other piece of it is referendum dollars. You don't get those till like the next referendum, they'll be, not referendum, next levy, there'll be adjustments on the referendum. Because we've already levied the referendum dollars for this year. So that's why you don't see all the dollars right away. And then there's a, there's a tax shift for reemployment and career in tech, and we don't know what that is until we get this levy in the fall. So that adjustment is done. And then there's school land up north that districts get the interest off of that. So every year they figure what the interest is and reallocate it to the district. So that increased a little bit. And then the special ed aid. In May and June, we got what the final amounts were for sixteen seventeen. And then they were able to clarify to us what the actual increase would be in the seventeen eighteen school year. So that increase. So that increase is 470,511. So what's actually in our budget for special ed this budget is 5,175,11. And then interest is going up just a little bit, so we adjusted our, this, that budget used to be, when I first came, like $350,000. We don't get that anymore. So that's the revenue side of the adjustments. On the expenditure side, once we get the audit done, there's, there's certain expenditures that are very actually hard to predict. And so then, depending on what the variances are, we go back in and then re-project what we think it's going to be in the budget. So for tuition purchase services, access material, a health chargeback from the federal special ed, and special ed transportation, there was an additional 148,823 for expenditures. District-wide operations and programs, this is a whole ton of programs, but there was a net decrease of 9,000. And then the sub-costs, I always kind of look at the last three years average and then adjust the budget based on that, because we're never going to hit it. We don't know ahead of time who's going to be sick, how many people are going to be gone. So that was increased by 37,844. And then that, like, the third piece of the budget is all the payroll and benefits, and it's, we call it a payroll benefit annual calc, because what it's doing is pulling everything out of the payroll system. We annualize it and then it shoots it in our budget. So within that is the 500,000 budget reduction that you guys had approved last spring. And because that reduction was basically staff, so you'll see that in here. There was actually a 1.69 FTE decrease, and this is only the general fund. This doesn't count community ed. It would have updated what we had projected for new hires to what they were actually hired for. And then there was additional access positions at the elementary. And then, I think you remember that the title, title funding was all cut. And so what was covered by Title II, more of it had to be covered by the general fund. This budget is step movement only in the teachers' contract, so you will receive a second revised budget when negotiations are completed. All the other contracts, it's all settled amounts. And then the health and dental premiums are updated to actual. And so that amount for that piece of the payroll benefit part was actually a negative, a reduction of expenditures of 466,923. So what that tells me is because you were reducing 500,000, and everything else that we had in there were projections, if the projections would have been perfect, we should have seen 500,000 minus there. So it shows that we were pretty close to all of the projections in that piece. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So the, in total, the expenditure budget then was reduced by 289,285. So when you take the increase in revenues of 876 and the decrease in expenditures, then that is a positive effect to your fund balance of 1,165,357. So if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, that's where we expected, that's where, when we did the adopted budget, that we expected the fund balances to be. The first line is all of our restricted accounts, which we don't really have a lot of control of what they're being spent on. The second line is our committed for pension and technology. And so that's the same, those dollars are spent on those two items. So the third line is, we always have it marked as the yellow line. This is the line that we really have control over for operating our school district. So the adopted budget, we had expected to be at 10,987,839. On this revised budget, it's projected to be at 12,186,398, which is a difference of 1,198,559. So where that difference comes in is, if you look right here, this is the adjustments comes to the 1.165. And then we had a positive variance for last year of 33,201. So if you add that together, that's what the difference is. So then if you go to the next two pages, so this page is all of the general fund, but more, all of these at the top, they're, they're self-funding. There's only certain things that we can spend those dollars on. So the yellow line is really at the bottom. That's the dollars that we really have access to pay salaries, operate our buildings. So we are overspending in this budget by 835,477. And we're expecting the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year to be at 12,186,398.
And that's without settlements?
That's, that's without the final.
Without, okay.
Teacher settlement. And then any variances that happen, because a lot of this is still projected. Students come and go all year long. And then if you go to the last two pages, that's the final for last year. You can see what happened there. And then in between, it's just more detail on all of the revenue, the expenditures, what our capital projects are, what the LTFM projects are, student counts, it's just more detail. So is there any questions?
I know we just said.
I just want to clarify, the reason this is revised number one budget is, once we do achieve a settlement, that we will have a revised number two budget, which is uncommon. That doesn't happen usually. That's a big piece being integrated.
What also is uncommon is that we're within 30,000 projections for last year. Let's just leave it at that.
I can really just say it's 30,000, but there's bigger variances one way and bigger variances the other to equal that.
Take the issue.
It's not that I was that close on everything.
Take the compliment this year, because next year will be, you'll never be that close again.
Sounds like he's throwing out the gun there. Sounds like a challenge.
That's impossible.
Is there, is there any further discussion on the budget? We have received a motion in a second. Not at this time. I'm going to call, call a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our third action item tonight is a motion to approve the termination of the ABE program at the conclusion of the 2017-18 school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you.
I just want to share that this has nothing to do with the individuals leading the program. We've had a lot of discussion on this at work sessions. You know, one of the individuals has worked for over 20 years of dedication and commitment. But when you combine the rising costs of employees with the amount of money that we get for seat time in the ABE program, and for those watching at home or on Hastings cable television, the Adult Basic Education Program might be for a student who left school early, decides to come back at age 19 or 20, get their GED. It might be for a person from another country who's moved here to get their GED. It might be for a person who 10 years ago, in another community, then finished their high school diploma to get their GED. Part of the program also works with some individuals on social skills, job interviewing, resume, et cetera. Definitely a needed program in the community. But the program over the last couple of years has been in the red. In fact, three years in a row, it's been in the red. And I'm looking and asking the board to, I've been in communication with Kerry Gorb, been in communication with some of the, with the employees in the program. We had to cut the instructional assistance this year just to get down to where it would be 9,000 over budget rather than 38,000 in the red. And so having said that, I do think it's time to move into another direction and work with the South Washington School District on a consortium for ABE. I shared at our work session that we're one of only five schools in the entire state of Minnesota that's not in a consortium. I don't know, I can't remember the five schools off the top of my head, but I know that Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Osseo are three of the schools that aren't in a consortium. Otherwise, other districts do enter into a consortium for this type of service for their community. So with that, I am asking the board, and I wanted to make sure and clear, be very clear it wasn't anything due to employee guidance, supervision, expertise. It's just the funding formula for the program for us right now.
And not to jump into the following motion, but to be clear, ABE programming will continue.
Yes, we still want an ABE services and program in the Hastings community and area.
Is there any further discussion? With that, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And then in a very related action item, our fourth item is a motion to approve moving forward with the consideration of entering into a consortium with South Washington County Schools for ABE programs and services for the 2018-19 school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
The first thing I wanted to share on this, I don't even know if this was actually needed as a motion item, but I wanted to put it on the agenda to let the community know and let Kerry Gorb know, continue moving forward with the consortium, and that we are looking at some ABE services through the consortium of South Washington, and that's why I put it on the agenda.
Yeah. I think it's important to have it on there just to state that we as a board feel it's a really important part of the Hastings Public School System, and we just want to provide that service in the, as strongly as possible. And this is the direction we feel like we need to go.
Well said.
So people of Hastings, of course, want to know if they have to cross the river to get their ABE. Can you talk about that at all?
Well, they could if they wanted to.
Right, right.
Because it would be a blended, and if, if an individual then is working in Woodbury or Cottage Grove, and then there's an evening program over there, they could enter into that program, or vice versa.
So there still will be some programming?
Yes, yes.
They could do that, but they don't have to.
They don't have to, no.
We would still.
And there would still be, I don't know exactly what it would look like, because there's a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot, with the number one being South Wash saying that, yes, we want to do this.
All right. I'm going to call for a vote for the motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fifth action item tonight is a motion to approve four leaves. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Sixth action item is a motion to accept the resignations of three individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Our seventh action item tonight is a motion to accept the retirement of a single staff member. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for your 24 years of service.
Thank you for 24 years of service, absolutely. All those in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next and final action item of the night is a motion to improve the employment of, two, three, four, five, eight or nine people. Might have miscounted. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We end with just a few upcoming dates. Our next work session is going to come up quick, quick. It's next week already.
That's right.
We're rolling into November, I know. Six o'clock, my understanding is that work session will be held at the middle school in the Raider reading room.
Yeah, Raider reading. So I'd come here and we'll walk down together.
Okay.
Okay. I will do that. A date that didn't make our list, but that we all believe is very important, is our upcoming elections on Tuesday, November 7th. We would like everybody in our Hastings Public School District area to get out and vote. And I personally would like you to vote yes on both the levy and the bond. Our, the next meet item that we have is we have the high school lunch for the Tuesday, November 14th, Dan, Russ, and myself. And then Wednesday, November 15th, is our regular board meeting, right back here, six o'clock. And if any, this is going live, which I'm not sure that it is. But if it is, there's going to be a community meeting in 18 minutes in Hampton to learn more about the operating levy and bond. Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We don't have no discussion on the adjournment, because it's right past that.
Yes, I'll see you tomorrow morning at 9:17.